I hereby reconvene, I convene the May 13th, 2014 meeting of the Marion County School Board at 6:30 PM. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting that everyone in the audience, please turn off your cellphone or put them on vibrate. Bellevue High School Principal Mike Kelly is here to introduce the students who will be providing the inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening. Mr. Kelly.
Thank you. Good evening and morning. Tonight, I want to introduce to you Javon Latson. He is a junior at Bellevue High School. Being new to Bellevue this year, I first saw Javon at reading, or reciting his speech at a Martin Luther King Day celebration in the villages, and very inspired by that speech that he gave. It was wonderful. And he went on to present this and enter the governor's Black History Month Speech Contest and won that contest. And so tonight, we get to have Javon. He, I can tell you, the speech that I heard was, I think Javon told me it was over 4,000 words, and he had to reduce it to around 500 for the speech contest. So I can tell you, the 4,000-word one was excellent, and I hadn't heard the 500 one, but I'm sure it's action-packed. So I'd like to introduce to you Javon Latson.
My name is Javin Latson, and I'll be reading my essay entitled, "Make History Speak Up for Righteousness." My grandfather, Leonard Reynolds, exemplifies the concept, stand up for righteousness and speak out against injustice. On August 28th, 1963, he was a law enforcement officer working for the Metropolitan Police Department in Washington DC. He had been assigned to perform crowd control at the March on Washington for Jobs and Freedom, where Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. presented his historic "I Have a Dream" speech. My grandfather stood among the famous and the unknown, who had assembled to inspire one another to believe that equality for all people was a cause worth pursuing. As the edict to stand up for fairness in the workplace was broadcast to the world, its message resonated within my granddad. He understood the need for equality because his employer required him to work under a policy of racial discrimination. My grandfather was not permitted to drive a police cruiser in the neighborhoods he patrolled. While Caucasian police officers in 1963 were authorized to drive patrol cars, African-American officers were not entrusted with that authority. With the assistance of a local clergyman, my grandfather brought his discriminatory practice to the attention of the city council. After he challenged the police administration's unjust policy, black officers, like their white counterparts, were granted the right to drive patrol cars. My grandfather felt a sense of accomplishment when officers of every hue were permitted to drive police cars throughout Washington DC. Even though he knew his name would never be emblazoned on the annals of history for what he had done, he was satisfied in knowing that he was the one who had effectuated a change in the status quo. A wrongful workplace practice had been abolished. Leonard Reynolds had embraced the message of the march. The dream of freedom and equality deeply embedded within his soul had empowered him to speak up for what was right. In 1969, my grandfather was appointed to drive the lead police car in President Richard Nixon's first inaugural parade down Pennsylvania Avenue. He was still just doing his job, but what a befitting assignment. My grandfather, who is now 84 years old, continues to live a life that illustrates Dr. King's statement. "An individual has not started living until he can rise above the narrow confines of his individualistic concerns to the broader concerns of all humanity." Dr. King's dream motivated individuals to stand up for what is right regardless of the circumstances. He encouraged his listeners to endure adversity when acting to rectify a wrong. He challenged everyone to risk losing popularity for the sake of righteousness. Dr. King's legacy of speaking out against injustice is one that every person should strive for. I endeavor to be like my granddad and Dr. King by creating a legacy of standing up for righteousness and speaking out against injustice. Thank you.
Let me ask everybody to rise and recite the pledges. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their republic for which they stand, one nation, one God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Mr. Latson, job well done.
I'm sorry that we could only listen to 500 words.
Mrs. Superintendent.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend approval of the agenda for the May 13th, 2014 School Board meeting. With the materials in the board packet, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, the audio recording and DVD included as part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
To move.
Second.
It was moved by Mr. Crawford. It was seconded by Mrs. Ely. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Nothing.
No.
Wonderful. I love going to a new system. May I vote for you?
Yes.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion pass, five zero.
Thank you.
You ready?
Okay.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the April 8, 2014 School Board meeting? May I have a motion and second?
To move.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Ely, seconded by Ms. Borton. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion pass, five zero. Ms. Linda Camholtz, Internal Audit, will now be, now provide an overview of her department's duties and responsibility. Ms. Cam.
Are you able to hear me adequately with the microphone?
I can hear you.
Okay. Good evening, and thank you for inviting us to present information on our department this evening. For those of you who I haven't met, my name is Linda Camholtz. I am the Internal Auditor for the District.
I know you well.
I know you do. Thanks, Carol. I'd also like to introduce, I have two members of my department with me here this evening. Patricia Eubanks, who is our Internal Audit Department Bookkeeper, and Lisa Frederick, who is our auditing assistant. We do also have a student worker who is not able to join us tonight. Her name is Katie Douglas. And our offices are located on the MTI campus, Building 3 and Room 5. So, first question, what are internal accounts? Internal accounts are the funds that the schools generate. They're not taxpayer dollars, they're not governmental funds. Examples would be field trips, dance collections, athletic receipts, and donations that are made directly to the schools. The internal account rules and regulations come from the Florida Department of Education Financial and Program Cost Accounting and Reporting for Florida Schools, which is a mouthful, so we just call it the Red Book, Marion County Public School Board Policies, and the Florida State Statutes. Our responsibilities include annual audits of all sites that are using internal accounts, interim audits as required and needed, new bookkeeper training, and just for purposes of this presentation, I am going to use the term "bookkeeper." I think all of you are aware, though, at the elementary and middle school level, the secretary does fulfill the bookkeeper role. Continuing education for all bookkeepers. We submit the monthly Florida Department of Revenue Sales Tax Reports. We conduct fraud investigations. We research and answer questions from all school personnel, assist with the interviews to hire new bookkeepers, coordinate the annual audit by the external auditors, and we track the annual outside service organizations, which are the PTOs, PTAs, and booster clubs, retired paperwork, and their insurance renewal. Annual audits. Full audits are conducted at all 51 schools and at three additional sites that also have internal accounts, and those are the Homeless Nady Program, the Silver River Museum, and the Extended Day Program. The audits are conducted for the prior fiscal year once that year is completed. All paperwork involving internal accounts is reviewed. There is no random sampling that is done. They are 100% audits, and there are a total of 94 steps involved in every audit. As part of each audit, we review all of the money's collected forms, the purchase order packets, the departmental receipt books, letters of requests that are sent to the superintendent and the school board, bank statements, gift card paperwork, Skyward monthly reports, fundraiser recaps, and documents from all admission events. In any year, over 62,000 money-collected forms are audited and over 20,000 checks. I'm not going to go through every statistic on this page and the next one, but just some highlights from this are mainly the number of money-collected forms that are looked at. At an elementary school, they range from 185 to over 2,500, so some of our elementary school numbers are as large as a middle school. A small elementary school audit takes two to three days, while a large elementary school takes five to six days to complete the audit. At the middle school level, the number of money-collected forms between 478 and over 1,600. They take four to five days to complete for a small middle school, a large middle school six to seven days. And lastly, at the high school, you can see the numbers, they're a whopping 889 to just shy of 4,000 money-collected forms per year. A small high school audit will take eight to nine days to complete, and a large one may take 14 to 15 days. Interim audits are conducted anytime we have a change in principal or bookkeeper at a site. Those audits must be called in immediately. They do take priority over the completion of all other audits. They are also done for the first three quarters during a new bookkeeper's tenure to ensure that the policies and procedures are being followed and to give that bookkeeper and principal immediate feedback. If a school is experiencing difficulties, as noted in their audit results, an interim audit may be conducted at the superintendent or principal's request until we have evidence that the bookkeeper is back on track. The same steps that are taken in a full audit are done in the interim audits as well. And to date, the Internal Auditing Department has called in 38 interim audits just this fiscal year. Again, I'm not going to go through every item on these next few pages. I just want to highlight some of the items that we do look for in an audit. These are items from both the Red Book and from School Board Policy 7.32. We ensure have all funds collected by the teachers and sponsors been turned into the bookkeeper within one business day. Do all checks have two authorized signatures? Have all the records been sent in for auditing and not lost or destroyed during the year? Have all personal gifts to students, teachers, or charitable organizations been approved by the superintendent or school board when required? Have all expenditures been approved in writing in advance by the principal? And have bids and quotes been obtained if necessary? Have any restricted purchases been made? And have any donations in excess of $500 been approved, in excess of 500 by the superintendent, in excess of 1,000 by the members of the school board? Once the audit is complete, the Internal Auditor completes a preliminary audit report, and the Internal Auditor, that is me, meets with the principal and bookkeeper, who are responsible for the results, and discusses the findings with them. The principal then submits a letter to the superintendent informing him of the steps that will be taken to correct the issues. The audit report is then included in the board packet for school board members to review, and it is essential that open communication with the superintendent is always maintained by the Internal Auditor, so he is aware of any significant issues that were discovered during the audit. Anytime a new school bookkeeper is hired, we do train that individual in all internal account policies and procedures. The new bookkeeper spends time working very closely with Patricia Eubanks, who teaches them how to work in Skyward SBAA. That's the new internal account software that we implemented in August of last year, and how to issue checks, make deposits, and that sort of thing. The new bookkeeper also works with me anytime there is an auditing question to ensure that board policies and Florida DOE Red Book regulations are met. Also, any bookkeeper who has been in that role with Marion County Public Schools for two years or less attends what we call newbie training meetings. Those are conducted by our department, and the bookkeepers in that group are more likely to ask questions and voice concerns when they're in a small group with their peers who also have two years' experience or less than when they are in the large group continuing education meetings. We've received very positive feedback from these groups. They really enjoy having the smaller size and the ability to talk with us individually at those meetings. Then the larger meetings, all bookkeepers, both new and more experienced, receive ongoing continuing education twice per year from our department. The training sessions are divided by school level, and all members of our department present topics for review and discussion, and then a question-and-answer time is included at the end of each meeting. When we surveyed the bookkeepers to determine if these sessions were worthwhile to them, they not only responded in a positive action, but they truly begged us to continue. We wanted to make sure we weren't wasting their time, and they made it very clear that we're not. Florida Sales Tax. The Internal Auditing Department is responsible for ensuring that the schools pay sales tax on purchases when required by the Florida DOR. Although the schools themselves are tax-exempt, there are instances when purchases are made for the students, and if the students retain ownership of the item, and I listed here, for example, graduation caps and gowns, the Department of Revenue requires that we either pay the sales tax directly to the vendor or remit the amount due to our department. We then send it to the Department of Revenue on behalf of the school. Can you go back, please? Patricia Eubanks then sends the sales tax checks to the Finance Department, and Mrs. Eubanks prepares and submits a monthly sales tax report that goes to the Florida Department of Revenue. Fraud Investigations, per School Board Policy 6.15, the Internal Auditor is responsible for conducting all fraud investigations for the district, not just those involving internal accounts. The policy states that "any irregularity that is detected or suspected by any member of management shall be reported immediately to the Internal Auditor for guidance as to whether pursuit of an investigation is warranted." Investigations are the top priority when they do arise, and results are shared with the superintendent and any other parties as deemed necessary. Follow-up actions are determined by the superintendent and his management team with input from the Internal Auditor as requested. The Internal Auditing Department receives many phone calls and emails from school and district personnel daily, sometimes in excess of 150 emails and calls per day, asking for assistance with everything from policy and procedure, Skyward software questions, can a particular vendor be utilized, and basic just help, how do we do this questions. Our department has divided the question topics into categories that each of us is responsible for handling, although we are all cross-trained to work as a team to handle any auditing needs that may arise. The Internal Auditing Department works closely with the Federal Grants Department at the school district to ensure that grant funds received by the schools are handled in the proper manner. If the Federal Grants Department determines that the fund should be included in internal accounts, we then refer to them as mini-grants. The schools must ask permission to accept the mini-grants, and then they are subsequently set up in a special trust account in the internal accounts, so we can track them individually for compliance with the grant requirements. When an opening arises for a new school bookkeeper, the Internal Auditor is frequently called upon to assist with the interviews. The internal accounts at each site are a very critical piece of the tasks each day that each bookkeeper conducts, and it is important that the individual in that role be capable of fulfilling the financial responsibilities. The Internal Auditor helps the principal to determine which candidates are a viable choice for that position at their school. And lastly, the annual state audit. Each year, the district's external auditors conduct an audit of the Internal Auditing Department and the internal accounts at a sampling of schools. The Internal Auditing Department meets with the external auditors to complete their initial questionnaire regarding the internal accounts operating system, policies and procedures, and the fraud program. The Internal Auditor then coordinates the site visits that the external auditors do at 10 to 15 of our schools each year. The auditor informs the schools how to prepare for the visits, and will go to the school to help with the site visit if the bookkeeper is new and would like additional assistance. I wanted to close by sharing our contact information with you. It's also in the presentation in your board packet. If you do wish to reach any of us, there's the information. And at this time, do you have any questions that we may answer?
Ms. Ely.
I wanted to applaud our bookkeepers because they have a tremendous job on their hands, and the principals rely on their expertise, and I know they spend many, many hours trying to get the audit box ready for you to look at. I also wanted to thank you for doing such a good job, being so thorough with the principals. Before you came on board, I would always, as a principal, get the certificate in the courier, but what a great job I did. And then you came in and you, you know...
Sorry.
Yeah, but it was good. It was a learning, new learning curve for me, but you came in there very professionally, helped us see what needed to be fixed, and you do that with all of our principals, and thank you so much for your hard work.
Thank you.
You know, the thing that I find so interesting about your job, and I want to try and put it in perspective for people that, so they will understand what you do. A bookkeeper at a school, whether it's elementary, middle, or high, have so many people out there trying to write a check. Just imagine if you, and my wife especially, I'm saying this, I know she's looking at this, but she handles the checkbook, and I don't write checks. But can you imagine if you have 100 and some odd people that's writing on your internal account and how difficult it is to get everybody to do everything the right way all the time? So when I look at all 3,000 or 6,000 people we have in the district and they're hitting those internal accounts, especially on the school side, hats off to our internal audits because I know how difficult that is, and to get two signatures and a receipt sometime.
Not to mention get the money's collective forms together for you.
And so, most people don't know what we're talking about here in terms of the internal audits, and they just think it, when they go and hand it to the bookkeeper and all of that, it's all over. But I know the real story, and I want to commend you guys for a job well done because you do have a lot of people that, for some reason, can't get that receipt, or they go and buy something and then say, "Well, I forgot about it." I understand that, and I think the board understands. Thank you for your report tonight. Thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Judy Zanetti, Public Education Foundation Officer has a business partner she would like to recognize.
Good evening, Chairperson James, Superintendent Tomlin, school board members. As always, it's a pleasure for me to be here because I'm here presenting great things. And I'm going to call up with me this evening Principal Lori Manresa from Hillcrest School and her new business partners, Randy and Bo Briggs of the Briggs Law Firm. And as you know, at the Public Education Foundation, we work hard to connect children, classrooms, and communities, and our business partner program is a very important piece of that puzzle. And Ms. Manresa had brought Mr. Randy Briggs to Hillcrest, gave him a tour, and he knew then that he wanted to partner with them and the very special school that they are. So this evening, I have certificates both for the law firm and for Hillcrest to hang there, but before I give those out, I'd like to let Lori and Mr. Briggs have a few moments to comment.
Thank you. Thank you all. For those of you that don't know me, I've been at Hillcrest School now for 14 years, and we don't have an IB program, and we don't have an ACE program, but we have very special children on our campus. And our vision and our mission is very clear, and I appreciate Mr. Briggs, his time, and then coming out and visiting with our school and seeing the challenges that we face every day, but I assure you that we do it with pride and with dignity for those kids. So thank you for believing in us and our vision and our mission. Thank you, Mr. Briggs. Thank you.
I ought to let my partner speak to you. He shares the same last name I have, but I wouldn't hear about, I'd be hearing about it on the way out. In short, it was through several people, including Woody Clymer, suggested we go see Hillcrest, and Lori gave us a tour. We spent about an hour and a half the first time we were there, and it was very inspiring, very moving. We're in the business of helping people, and Hillcrest is in the business of helping people, so we felt it would be a good fit, and so we're proud and honored to be the business partner at Hillcrest.
Randy, I have to say this, you know I have to say this. You know, I red-crossed Randy out at Lowell's the other day. And when I say this to you, Randy, I want you to take it in the ingested way. I said, "You enjoy your time off."
Even with a dead battery.
Boy, his beard, boy, he looked like he was a beach coma. But you clean up really well, Randy. I just wanted everybody to know that you are just an ordinary person, that do ordinary things, like change your batteries, and you really look like you enjoy your weekends.
Well, I appreciate it. I wish you would carry jumper cables in your car next time. It took me another 20 minutes to get the help I needed.
Okay, thanks, Randy, for the job. Well done. And it's always good to have you part of the community and part of the school system. I've been knowing him a long time, and I just appreciate what you do, and I know you have, I think it's your daughter that's in the school system as well. And so, thank you again, and again, Hillcrest is one of our jewels that we keep. Thank you for being a part of it.
And Mr. Briggs is a big Gator fan. We won't hold that against him, Ms. Ely, it's okay.
Okay, thank you.
We have a divided household. My son is a Florida State graduate.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay, thank you.
How'd that happen?
Mrs. Zanetti, you sit at the floor.
All right, well, good evening again, everyone. This time, I'm going to call up two other special people to be with me. We've got Crystal Sizmar, media specialist at Westport High School, and from Century Link, Lisa Willis, come on up. And I know that Ms. Elsperman is here cheering Mrs. Sizmar on. Through the Public Education Foundation and Century Link, Mrs. Sizmar applied for a Teachers and Technology Grant and has been awarded $5,000 from Century Link. And I will allow Mrs. Sizmar to explain to you, because it may be a little bit above my head, but she's going to explain to you what they're going to do with that money at Westport High School.
Thank you. This money is going to allow me, as the librarian, to reach the students and the staff at Westport High School and to teach information literacy, to get those students and teachers using all of our wonderful technology resources and our eBooks. We have over 600 eBooks in our collection, and we're going to teach all the kids how to really get on them and check them out and take them offline, and use the GALE databases and use the apps that go with the databases so they can do their research projects. And, you know, they all have their own technology. They just need to be taught how to use it, and it's going to be my privilege to be able to do that with this grant and all this new technology. Thank you.
And Ms. Willis?
Good evening, how are you?
Good evening.
I just wanted to read a quick statement and congratulate Crystal again on her grant. Century Link's vision is to improve lives, strengthen business, and connect communities by delivering advanced technologies and solutions with honest and personal service. Century Link extends this vision through the Century Link Clark M. Williams Foundation, a 501(c)(3) organization dedicated to contributing to endeavors that improve the well-being and overall quality of life for people throughout Century Link's communities. Named after the founder of the company, the foundation is endowed to support community initiatives that encourage our employees to use their time, talents, and resources to strengthen the communities in which they live and work. This is the first time in the history of this Teacher and Technology Grant Program that it has been extended to Florida, and within the state of Florida, we donated approximately $100,000. And half of that, approximately half of that, was in central Florida alone, so it is with great pride that we're awarding the $5,000 grant to Mrs. Sizmar.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I see Ms. Elsperman out there. Ms. Elsperman, you should come in and take a part of, be a part of the picture.
Come on, Ms. Elsperman. Come on in.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, this is some neat things that are occurring in our school system. Okay, thank you. Mr. Chester Gregory. thank you. Mr. Chester Gregory, Deputy Superintendent of Operations, please come forward with Mr. Greg Messenbrink. I hope I got that right. Division Vice President of Marketing for Synergistic, the Energy Conservation Company. Mr. Gregory.
Good evening. I have Craig and James. Why don't you come up also? I have James Newkirk, who is a former employee for the Marion County School Board that Synergistic hired away, and took him away from us. And I believe he travels the nation, helping out with energy conservation efforts throughout school systems and businesses. So, they are here today to present to Marion County Public Schools with their Energy Lighthouse Award. So I'll turn it over to Craig.
Thank you. Thank you, Board Chair. Mr. Superintendent, my name is Craig Messenbrink. Again, Development for Florida for Synergistic, formerly Energy Education. Back in 2005, you and the board had the wisdom to partner with Synergistic, and that partnership continues today. We're a national company that implements a non-capital approach to energy conservation. In the beginning, it was Colin Barrett and James Newkirk were the energy specialists defined within Marion County to help implement this program, to work every square foot and reduce energy in Marion County. Over that time, I've just got a few statistics, but a couple of things of note. And that is that we've partnered with more than 1,300 school districts in the country, and 15 here in Florida. And we don't do a whole lot of this. And that's because Marion County has exceeded the, our expectations has exceeded the standards in implementing this process. We measure this. Everything is measured right off the utility bills. And so, as much as a lot of other things have been done with new construction and renovation and capital work, this is really an effort that goes to the custodians and the principals and the staff, day in and day out, to control all the energy that they have the ability to control. And so, you know, that's why we are here, and why I'm here, to present you and the district with an Energy Lighthouse Award. And if you don't mind, I'll just read what this says. "For conserving our nation's precious resources through the dedicated implementation of the Synergistic Energy Management Program, serving as a model of energy conservation for fellow educational organizations. Marion County Public Schools hereby presented the Energy Lighthouse Award. Continued excellence in environmental and financial stewardship." So with that, there's a couple of statistics here. You started, and the district started back in December of 2005 with this process. Over that period of time, you've reduced energy consumption by 26% on average. That's, it's 26% lower now than it was back in 2005. That's a little bit like, I'll turn it upside down and say, it's a little bit like Atlas holding up the world. You know, this is, there's a lot of conservation, whether that's lights and computers, shutting down the HVAC, making sure the humidity is controlled, and the buildings are safe and comfortable for the learning environment, but really, not running when the students are not there. The program savings, as I said, has been a 26% reduction over that long period of time. But that is equated to a lot of money as well, while it's been measured. And that's what I want to show symbolically, because it's almost $22 million. And that's when I came and talked with Chester, and I've talked with the superintendent, that over this time period, almost $22 million has been reduced. That's money you were sending to the utility, that you're not sending to the utility now. Now, a lot of people in the community, a lot of folks might, may look at the superintendent and say, "Where's that money?" But that's, that's already been reallocated, right? That's money that wasn't spent. And so, from this, there's a lot of different impacts. That's more than 8.5 million kilowatt-hours less that is being consumed this year than was in 2005. That's amazing, considering there's more than a million new square feet this year than there was in 2005. So not only are those square feet being operated for free relatively, but there's still reductions. Over that period of time, electricity rates have gone up 22%. And so, along with that rate increase, the cost per square foot has stayed flat. And one of the things that we're very proud of at Synergistic, we've partnered with 15 of the school systems here in Florida, that the state average cost per square foot is about $1.15. Our average of the folks we work with is 94 cents, well below the state average. And Marion County is at 94 cents. And that puts you in the top 10 of the 67 districts here in the state of Florida. We consider that best in class. And therefore, again, low cost per square foot, more, almost $22 million saved, 26% reduction in consumption. That earns the Energy Lighthouse Award. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Craig, I'd like to do that.
Thank you very much.
James, you have a few words you want to say to us?
Well, I am so proud to be a part of the conservation culture that's here in Marion County, and I'm thrilled to see it continue and thrive. Thank you for having me be part of it, and I wish everybody all the best. So, thanks.
Thank you. Once again, thank you. Ms. Suzanne McGuire, Community and Homeless Liaison, also have a special donation recognition tonight. Ms. McGuire.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, this evening, I have two things. First, I'd like to call up Mr. Jim Anthony from Community Bank and Trust, and Tara Bauer from Community Bank and Trust. Community Bank and Trust, and I'll let Jim talk a little bit about it, is a local bank who, for the last 11 years, has had a wonderful golf tournament that has benefited the homeless children program. And for the golfers, it's pretty unique, because it starts in the afternoon, and then it goes at night, and there's like glow necklaces and all kinds of stuff. And it's a lot of fun out there. And over the past 11 years, Community Bank has donated over $118,000 to the homeless children program, to help a lot of our children in Marion County schools. They also support Stuff the Bus, and all of their branches do some really creative things. Last year, one of the branches had a bus stop with a bench and a stop sign. One of them actually turned part of the wall into a drop, where when you went by, it made brake sounds of a bus. It had a recording inside. And it's really a lot of participation from the employees. The other thing is, over the past years, they have had volunteer hours. This year's golf tournament, 15 employees donated, spent about 185 hours volunteering to support the golf tournament. And over the 11 years, their employees have contributed over 900 hours of volunteer time for the golf tournament to support Tea Time for Tots, which directly benefits the homeless children program and Marion County schools. So I do have a little something to present to Jim on behalf of the homeless children program. And it's just a little bit of a token for their continued support and appreciation from me on behalf of all the children and all the things that we can do at the schools.
Thank you. I know a few folks up here at this podium, and pleased to be here tonight. Tea Time for Tots, that's the name of our golf tournament. If you are golfers, it's something you might want to consider. It's very interesting. But we just completed our 12th annual back in March, and I'm pleased to say that we had a very successful tournament this year. We had a check here for nearly $16,000 this year for the homeless children and youth program in Marion County. This has been a labor of love for our employees. We have over 120 employees today. It's been a democratic process we went through to select our cause, and we can't think of something more important than helping the kids of Marion County right here in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you for helping our children and their families. We appreciate it.
I know, over a period of time, Community Bank and Hugh Daly has been a tremendous, tremendous backer of the Marion County school system. Whether he's out at the livestock for being, pushing cows around, or walking around. He's a local guy, and he always talks about giving back to the school system. And again, as a part of, I know the board will say a thousand thank yous to him and to the bank, because I know it's a job well done. And I know Hugh, if he could be here, and he may, he could have been here, he would have been here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Ms. McGuire.
Yes.
You may continue.
Thank you. Well, tonight, I'm here with some very wonderful people who spend so much time in our schools. And is everybody in from the hallway now? Okay. It's great when you don't even have enough chairs for all the volunteers that you're recognizing. And I do appreciate being here tonight. We have a process of recognizing our volunteers at all the schools. We ask our schools to submit their most outstanding volunteers, which I know is not an easy process. And we have a lot of different volunteers who do things in the classroom, school-wide. There are different categories. And we're recognizing the ones tonight that the committee picked. I'm going to call each one up here, tell you a little bit about their nomination, and what made them stand out. And then we do have a special award that we'll do a little bit after that. So first, I'd like to call up Alan White, who's being recognized as the youth volunteer for a classroom at Donellen Elementary School. And Alan's been a volunteer for about four years now. Yeah, you can call him. There you go. He's been a volunteer for about four years now in a classroom, and he's there daily. He spends most of his time working with the students on math, which we know is really important. The students look forward to working with him, and they treat him as a big brother. He works individually with the students, with flashcards, challenges them for speed and accuracy. In addition, I guess this year, he started helping out with the 4H program as well. And it was said that with the Hogs and getting there early to feed the, feed with everything, that it made it a lot easier for some of the staff members involved, because he was there every morning with the animals. His nominator said that he depends on him to make math fun for the class, and that Alan is an outstanding role model for my students and an outstanding student volunteer. So with that, I'd like to present this to you. Congratulations. The next youth volunteer was nominated as a school-wide volunteer, and it is Tricia Meyer from Westport. Tricia's been volunteering for four years also. She volunteers at Westport High School, Madison Street, Hammett Bowen, College of Central Florida, and is also involved in a mission project, Fusion Mission, is that? Fuse Mission. Okay. She's active with Mu Alpha Theta, works with her peers as a tutor. Her nomination said that she's always available, even if it's not her normal day to be there, that she's able to communicate what seemed to be challenging material, and make it easy and simple, and does it with grace and enthusiasm. Her nominator said that students leave feeling re-motivated and energized. She also helps in the classroom level, reads to children at Madison Street, at Hammett Bowen. And her nominator said that Tricia truly has a humble, kind, and generous heart, that she deserves recognition for all the hard work she has put into, from the goodness of her heart.
Congratulations, everyone. Thank you.
Our next winner tonight is Suzanne Johnson from Romeo, who is recognized as the adult classroom volunteer. Ms. Johnson? Ms. Johnson has also been a volunteer for four years now, so I think we have a little theme going here. And she is known lovingly at the school as Grandma Sue. It all started when she arrived at the school as part of the 100 grandparent readers from on top of the world. But then she got a little more committed to the school. She arrives early every morning, and is there after the students leave. She works with individual students, and if they are having difficulty, will sit with them and even give them a little extra attention during lunchtime. For field trips, she's done such things as purchased classroom t-shirts, including herself and the teacher, so that they all can be seen easily on a field trip. She takes home projects, does them regularly, especially if she can't do them during, I guess, your workday at the school. She's been instrumental in purchasing classroom and other materials, including a $2,000 donation to the PTO, to bring in an assembly on character education. Her nominator said, "We are very blessed to have Grandma Sue at Romeo. She does so much, it's hard for me to recall everything. I now consider her my right arm when she is there, and miss her terribly if she's not. Even former students stop by and give her a hug when they see her there." So, congratulations. Our next winner is in the adult category of school-wide, and it is Tammy Mills from Donellen Elementary. Okay, she broke our little theme here. She's been a volunteer now for six years at the school. And she's known as the on-call volunteer. She's a person to go to whenever there are special projects at the school. She helps at the school and logs hours at home. Mrs. Mills has encouraged and promoted the Labels for Education program, and Donellen Elementary School now has an account with over 30,000 points. She's even contacted a vendor who's, she has them clipping labels too, of things before they send them out, apparently. The merchandise that's purchased with this is used in the classrooms and in the school store. Tammy works on items in the store, even getting donations, and goes garage sale shopping. She helps with work in the dean's office, with the academic coaches on parents' nights, and spent a little bit of time decorating cookies with the Mother's Day project, with the things that come from Publix. Her nominator said she is a definite attribute to our school, and has made a difference in the lives of both teachers and students. So, congratulations. Next up, in the senior category, is Mary Senwald from Saddlewood. Mrs. Senwald has been a volunteer for four years, and for the past two years, has been in second-grade classroom. She's on campus three days a week, arrives early when the students get to school. She is eager to work with the students, and her kindness and gentleness is always equally shared with all the students and anyone who enters the classroom. She works with the students in small groups, going over strategies on sight words, and how to break the words down into syllables. Mrs. Senwald helps set up take-home folders, does classroom work, and helps with student planners. Her nominator said, "We are blessed to have such a wonderful, caring, willing, and dedicated person to share her time with us." Teachers can testify that a portion of their class success is partly due to the time she has volunteered in their classroom. Next, in the senior category, is the school-wide volunteer, and it is Ms. Kay Campbell from Maplewood. Congratulations. Mrs. Campbell's been a volunteer for three years. There is not a week that goes by that she is not somewhere on campus. Kay retired after 35 years in the teaching profession, making sure that kindergarten children had a proper foundation, and just couldn't get away. She is quick to volunteer for whatever needs to be done. She always has a smile and encouraging word for all of the staff. She helps in the front office, in the guidance office, and wherever she is needed. She was even the first one to sign up for the three days of the Snapshot Science Lab, and apparently, no amount of slime was going to scare her away. Her nominators said that Kay is a real treasure. She goes above and beyond what is expected as a volunteer. She is phenomenal with all the children. She has a heart and willingness to help others in need. Kay brings Maplewood to life with her fresh, vigorous approach in accommodating others' needs. And what was really appreciated by the committee is that she had a committee who nominated her. And usually, it's an individual or one or two teachers, but this was a lot of people from Maplewood, and they're all here, who nominated Ms. Kay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, lastly. Lastly, is two individuals that have won separate before. This year, they were nominated as Mr. and Mrs. Mr. Frank Russo and Mrs. Carolyn Root, if you would please come forward. They are the recipients of the Henry the Duda Award, and those of us who have worked with Mr. Duda know that his wife was instrumental in getting him to start volunteering years ago. They were readers when my children were at Ward Highlands Elementary. And even after her passing, I think he spent another nine years volunteering in the school system. And the committee really was touched that this year, we had a husband-and-wife team that we could recognize with the Duda Award. Frank and Carolyn have been volunteers for five years now. Since they saw the need and what their volunteerism did, they started a little project called Tutors for Kids. It started at Bellevue Santos, but now, they have over 180 active tutors, with 94 of them in Marion County schools. They're also in Wildwood, and they're in the villages, and they're in a few other places, and I have flyers to share with everybody. But they really saw what volunteering has made a difference. In Marion County, they're at Bellevue Santos, Bellevue Elementary, Harborview, Legacy, Marion Oaks, and Stanton Weersdale. Besides going into the classrooms, they started a book program, which provides new books to children. And I think it says that you've given out over 14,000 books.
Sixteen.
16,000 books, since they started this project a couple of years ago. And this is something that's really just so wonderful. Besides liking to give out books, when they were going to be readers and judges for the Sunshine State Bowl, they both individually read 15 of the books on the list, to make sure that they felt that they were competent judges to work with the students. In addition to that, they went out and purchased portable DVD players to give to the winning students. Many teachers wrote lots of comments and lots of things about this duo, and according to their nomination, it says, "You can see the impact Frank and Carolyn have had on our community through their endless hours of volunteering. They are humble, hard-working individuals who live their lives to help others. Aren't we the lucky ones who can claim them as two of our valuable volunteers that truly make the difference in the lives of our students and our teachers?" And there you go. Thank you. And I do want to thank Marion County veterans, helping veterans, who sponsored all of the awards that we were able to present to our volunteers tonight. And I want to thank all of the school staff that came here to support their volunteers, because they know that this is just a sampling of the thousands of people that spend thousands and thousands of hours in our schools, working with our students. And just go over there, please.
Hold a squeeze in, we'll get a nice circle. You're a little bit tired there. Ready, one, two, three. And one more, ready? One, two, three.
Thank you. Tell Suzanne I said hi. Volunteers, we thank you so very much for all the many hours and love that you've given our kids. I know that once you start working with them, you get attached to them, especially those little ones, and it's, it's hard not to let them go. We, we do have many, many volunteers, but you are, you all are the best, and we salute you. Thank you so much. We have another program that I'm a part of, Reading Pals, that's a reading volunteer program. We've got between 200 and 300 retired, mostly retired people, I'm not quite retired, but we, we go into the academies, the kindergarten academies, and read with the children twice a week. So if anybody out there is interested in being a volunteer and working with kids, especially with reading, which is so important, please call the United Way office. But thank you again, we're so proud of you.
Thank you.
Suzanne, I, I put my foot in my mouth a couple of days ago.
Okay.
And I was talking about volunteerism, and it's important to note that, that it's so many of our senior citizens that are out there volunteering, and I, and again, I just want to thank you for the mixture of people that we have.
Absolutely.
From every age group that really participate in our school. And this is a job that we really, really need to have in our schools. People coming into our class, into our school, to know the real story about what we do. Thank you again.
Absolutely, thank you. And I think it was great this year with all the youth nominees, because I think when the students get to see, like, the big brother or the big sister, they can really relate and have someone to talk to, and I think it makes a big difference as well.
Well, I, I can almost imagine that young man walking through that little hole in the wall, going from the high school over to the elementary school. That's the little, that's the little hole.
Yes.
That's made famous by the volunteers. Thank you.
Exactly, thank you.
I do have a question for you, Ms. McGuire.
Sure.
The student volunteers, how are they able to put the number of hours in, in the elementary school if they're going to school? Or are they?
Well, the elementary schools start significantly earlier than the high schools. So they go in the morning. So he's there pretty much early every morning, and then, like Mr. James says, just kind of sneaks through the little path there and goes right next door. And then, we also have volunteer students who help, like, in extended day and after-school programs, because the kids sometimes are on campus till about 6:00 at night, so they can go over and help them with homework and things like that.
That's great.
It is wonderful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I have a motion to approve the consenting agenda, asked to minute?
So moved.
Second.
It was, so moved by Mrs. Borton, second by Mrs. Ely. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. May I have a motion to, to approve the following donation? $1,000 to Evergreen Elementary School, from the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. $2,228.78 to Fessenden Elementary School, from the Fessenden Elementary PTO. $2,500 to Forest High School, from the Business Bonding, E1, Inc., via the Public Education Foundation. $2,000 to Marion Madison Street School, from the Madison Street PTA. $2,500 to Madison Street Academy, from their Business Bonding, Regent Bank, via the Public Education Foundation. $1,995 to Madison Street Academy, from the Madison Street Academy PTA. $1,380.1 to South Ocala Elementary School, from the South Ocala Elementary PTO. A gift card valued at $8,000 to Vanguard High School, from, from Ward Science. $5,000 to the Westport High, uh, Best Westport High, from the Consortium of Florida Education Foundation, via the Public Education Foundation. May I have a motion? And a second.
So moved.
Second.
This motion by Ms. Ely, second by Mrs. Borton. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passed 5-0. Ms. Ely, we use.
Sure. I love to talk about the money our schools are receiving from our, our business people in the, in Marion County, especially that $8,000 gift card, that's kind of cool. But thank you so very much for supporting our schools, and seeing the constant need that we have for all of the things going on in our school. This money that is donated to our schools, is, goes into the internal accounts that you probably, if you've been listening, Ms. Camholtz is our internal auditor, but that's a way that teachers, that principals and teachers can use that money to fit the needs of their school or their students. It's always going back to the students. Thank you, thank you, thank you. And thank you for our new business partner too, Mr. Briggs Hillcrest. We appreciate everything you do.
Board direction, saying none. Meeting and reminders, as employee suspension, an employee suspension is hearing is scheduled for, for Tuesday, May 20th, at 9:00 a.m. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for, for Thursday, May 22nd, 2014, at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of this work session is to receive a construction project update and review for the 2015 health insurance, general insurance options, proposed revision to the board policy 9.40, advertising and, and hiring process for in-house legal staff. Okay, please govern yourselves accordingly, folks. We're meeting a lot, but it's a good thing. I will ask the board for their concerns. We will start with Ms. Ely.
Oh, gosh, I'm doing way too much talking tonight. I wanted to congratulate all the students who were, who presented at our media festival last Friday night. The gentleman who conducted the festival gave some interesting statistics that I wanted to share with you, that Marion County leads the state with 27 videos that they presented for the state competition, that advanced to the state. And once at the state competition, Marion County claimed 14 of the state's 44 first-place awards. That's 32%, almost a third of all the first-place awards. And remember, we're competing with Dade, Broward, all the big counties too, so thank you, teachers and parents who helped get these media presentations together. It was a great festival. I know Ms. Borton was there with me, but we enjoyed it. The other thing I wanted to talk to you about, last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, and I, I know that many of you students did thank your teachers in many ways. The cards and letters are the best, but this was something that Superintendent shared with us. He asked for the students to give a practice interview if, if they were pretending to be the superintendent, and I want to read this to you. "Thank you all so much for helping kids through life. You have probably taught many kids throughout your life, and I thank you for that. Children come and go as they grow older and wiser, but teachers stay and teach more and more kids. Teachers have to keep up with all the new styles and learn more in different curriculums. It's a hard job. You never get thanked enough as a teacher throughout a school year, so there's a good, there's a week to thank all teachers. Thank you all so much for sticking together and going along with all the changes." This was from a middle school student. You sure it wasn't from you, Mr. Tomlin?
Not me.
Excellent writer.
Thank you. Ms. Borton?
Um, the media event was a wonderful event, wasn't it, Carol? It was so good to see all of the students come with their parents. It was standing room only, and I was just amazed at the work that our kids can do when put to the task. It was just wonderful. Also, along the media lines of art, Mr. Crawford and I attended the 2014 Congressional Arts Competition, and there were Hernando, Citrus, Levy Lake, and Marion County represented. And two of our students walked away, and they were both from Westport, one with an honorable mention, and one with second place. And I was really thrilled to see the participation from three of our high schools, Westport, Vanguard, and Donellen. It was, it was just a wonderful, nice event. And as I did the tour of the museum, I was, like, wowed. I was just wowed, I'm like, whoa, the artistic work of our students that, that competed in the competition was beyond Van Gogh, I said to myself. It was just really good. And then, on another note, Mrs. Superintendent, we were invited over to Howard Middle School to tour the museum of Mr. Mulvey's class, and it was medieval, a medieval museum tour, and I was still wowed over in this museum. I stayed a long time, because I was just so involved in just going from one of the exhibits to the next one. And the one that really caught my eye, they had an exhibit for the royalty, and all the girls came in with their, you know, tears, and they were dressed like they were in medieval times. And there was this diary, and it said, "Please don't touch, you know, this is the diary of Matilda." And so I started reading, and I was like, wow, this is good. And another parent, she took it after I did, and then we said, I talked to the student who actually did it, she said, I said, "This is so good, how did you get this? How did you get her diary?" She said, "I made it." And I said, "Wow, it was too authentic." Just to see the work that our students do, and what they put into it, to, to bring it the value, to show you they brought the medieval, medieval times to life, you know? It was really good. And I know you were there too, Ms. Stacy.
I was there too.
Yeah.
Mr. Crawford?
Nothing.
Ms. Stacy?
I also enjoyed the presentation at the Howard Middle, the Medieval Museum, that the children were so excited, the teachers can just be so incredibly creative. And yesterday, I had a fun day, I worked at the school all day, and, in kindergarten. And so, I got to be the teacher and help out in the classroom all day. That was quite enlightening. In with the things that I've requested the teachers email me, that I'm going to be, if they ever quit rolling in, I'm going to share with Mr. Tomlin, I received some information from librarians. And so, as I chased down the rabbits and different things that the librarians shared with me, they told me that in Clay County, no, Polk County, I'm sorry, Polk County, the librarians are funded partially with title dollars. And not knowing exactly how that could be done, because I, we're taught about supplanting and all the things that we can't do, and in, in Polk County, I spoke with several administrators and, and kind of tracked it all down. And what they do there is they use their title dollars at the schools if they want to. I guess it could be done from the district also, and maybe they do some from the district, but I know about the ones from the schools, where they use title dollars to fund half of their librarian. Because like us, they had cut the librarians down to own, to sharing, like halftime librarians. So because we have done that now for a year, we would be able to go in and use federal dollars to fund the other half of the librarian, so that our students could have a full librarian at, I guess, the elementary schools particularly. And in fact, one of the, a, a different librarian, she shared an article with me, and it was called "The Digital Divide." I found it very interesting, and, and one thing that I'm finding out, talking to teachers in the trenches, I met with teachers Wednesday night, I met with teachers last Friday night, and that there is a lack, the digital divide, the first wave is the lack of equal access to computers and internet by some children, by at-risk children, and, and they have limited access. And so, when we were in school, there were things that we learned in the library that helped us to be able to write little research papers and things. Well, now it's digital. And so many of the children, they are not, there's no one at home to teach them how to do the eBooks and research, and I don't even know how to do eBooks, I'm not a reader, but the librarians now are, are using this to teach the children, and they're calling the second wave, there's, that's the first wave, the lack of access to it. The second wave is those students that were in the first wave, who had limited access to computers, now are growing up without the foundation, technical skills that librarians could be teaching. And, and speaking of librarians around the district and around the state, in my research that I, I spent days doing, that there is, and I've been reading a lot, that if we, if we got our libraries back, I was over at one library in the district, and I saw that some of the books in there, Mr. Tomlin, were like, books from the 80s, you know, sports characters from the 80s. So if the little boys picked out a book that they enjoyed reading, and it was from the 1980s, their father may not have even been born when that sports figure was famous. And so, we're working so hard to teach children fours years old, fourth grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, to read. And I would like to do whatever I can do, or anybody you can lead me to, or any funds, or anybody I can help with grants, or whatever I can do, to help us get a better foundation in, from our library status, situation, because when we were in school, we all just learned to read. But we also spent a lot of time in the libraries. We picked out books and we read. And today, the kids go to the library, and it's kind of intimidating if they don't understand how eBooks work, and they can check out eBooks, and, and it takes a librarian to explain all of that. So, Mr. Tomlin, I'm, I'm asking you, begging you, that when we work on our staffing plan and, and that sort of thing, if you could look to see if there was any way that we also, like Polk County, could use some of our federal dollars to help bring some of those librarians back, so our elementary schools could have a full-time librarian. Thank you.
Good. Ms. Mar- Ms. Morris. Brenda?
Mr. Superintendent. To address your issue there, Ms. Stacy, we have already looked at that issue and studied it very carefully. What Polk County did and some other counties did, I don't know the specifics of it, but what they did essentially is they did away with all their librarians, did away with all their media services, rewrote a job description that called these people technical managers or managers of technology within their schools. So the body, the individual, might have satisfied the new job requirements, was now sitting in that position. And I just wonder what the title dollars can be used, and we certainly have already done that. And you know, you as a board have also asked our community to look very strongly at passing a one mil tax increase, which would go to increasing, improving media services in all of our schools. And that we're going to remember about, as you were well aware.
And what they shared with me, Mr. Tomlin, though, was that the schools...
That the way they could do it also was the schools that had only 50% librarians for a year, that they could then, the school could then use title dollars to only pay 50% of the librarian sal, like the other half of the librarian's salary, not by renaming them, but by just picking it up like that.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Superintendent.
Yesterday, Marion County, as you, as you know, hosted the, a DOE presentation, and I'd like to thank those board members who attended for going there. Commissioner Stewart was most appreciative of your support in being there. And I will also share with you that Marion County received a lot of, a number of compliments from other visiting administrators from other counties that happened to attend. I'm going to pass out to you also, and a hard copy, Mr. James, if you would pass those down. This is a copy of all the various activities that our schools are doing as far as awards, assemblies, and programs. I apologize for the small print, we tried to pack a lot in. Mrs. Flot-Ketter, if you would also send that electronically to board members tomorrow. Our schools, teachers, and especially students love it, love to see you when, if you're able to attend those events, and I know you like to do that also. I heard one comment tonight also in reference to our teacher evaluation system, and I saw some looks of curiosity and wonder on your face. I'll propose to the chairman and the board, if you'd like us, we'd be more than happy to, to give you a work session or present a work session on the evaluation process that we use with our instructors, and we can also use it for all of our employees, if you're so interested in that at some point in time in the future.
We will schedule one, because we need to just get on top of that.
We'll do that, thank you. That's all I have tonight, sir.
Thank you.
I have one more thing. I forgot. I wanted to share with parents, if you wanted to see the Student Media Festival, it will be aired on the education station Friday and Saturday at 7:00 p.m. and Sunday at 2:00. Especially you students who were walking across the stage, you might want to see yourself. So, thank you.
Mr. James, one more thing. Considering the fact that the teacher evaluation is a very big issue and a very big concern to teachers, I really wish we would have that workshop, Mr. James, and not just put it off. I really would like to understand it better and see what are different options for teacher evaluations. Maybe there's different options that we can choose than what we're using. I mean, if you don't want to have a workshop, if you can tell me who I can go to, to talk to about this.
I just asked for...
I mean, real quick, as quick as possible.
Okay, let me just look at what we have on the schedule.
I'm a sense of urgency person.
One of the things I just wanted to just share with you now, yesterday was a really a good, interesting day, in the sense of what we were doing. From 7:30 to about 12 o'clock, we were meeting with the Central Florida Coalition, and the issues that we are talking about are the same issues that we are discussing here today. It's the same issues that, that the message that the commissioner brought to us was the same issues that we were talking about in reference to that. The evaluations were on the table, we talked in terms of evaluation, we talked in terms of dollars and cents, and we talked in terms of the technology issue, and we talked in terms of what our plans were. Ms. Ellis was there, along with the other business or financial directors from other districts throughout the state. And one of the things I just would like to share with the board, when we give people little snippets of what is actually occurring, they have a tendency to say, "God, is that really happening?" But there's so much to this puzzle that we work, we work with. And I know people are out there saying, "Boy, we can do this, we can do this, we can do this, we can do that." But if we look at the, all of the things that were presented to us yesterday, and we look at all the people that we were sitting down in Orlando with, trying to figure out what to do about evaluations, about the eBook, the library, because we were sitting there looking at, looking at the budget and looking at what they're presenting to us, and the, and the superintendent, and I know, when I was sitting with Ms. Ellis over there, I would ask her, say, "How are we going to pay for this?" And she'd look at me and smile. And when I think in terms of all of these things, folk, I know that all of us are excited about what we want to do with our school system. But I encourage you guys to get out there and have our voice mingled in and amplified with all of the other people that have the same concerns that we have. Because I will tell you, the 10 districts that we had at that morning in Orlando, those people drove from, was it Brevard? All the way up here to hear it again. I know they heard the same thing that was from our lobbyists in Tallahassee. And I'm encouraging all of you, if we really want to make a difference, we have to get in there and mix it up. And we have to get down there and, and take advantage of what we have been a part of for all of these years. I will say this to you, on June 12th, we need to be, we will be in Tampa down there. And I know people will say, "Why do you go?" Because you will meet people down there that's thinking the same way that we are in trying to get something done. It's important for us to do that. One other thing too, on the 11th, they had, they stopped the Florida School Boards Association meeting, there's people there that's trying to get, deal with the same issues. Because if we want to talk to Polk County, I think we were sitting two streets over from Polk County, in terms of what they, what they're doing and what we can do. What I am saying more than anything else, I listened today, and I listened to a lot of people getting a lot of snippets of what's, what was, what's going on. And that went out of here, for every bad thing is said about something, 13 people hear about it, for every good thing, only two people hear about it. And when I think in terms of what we do in our school system, guys, I just hope we're not talking ourselves out of a good school system, because we are doing some good things here. And I just want everybody to know that. Now, that's my two cents for tonight. Before, before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received an alternative placement list for students through April 21st, 25th, 2014. Are there any parents in the audience who wish to speak on behalf of a student regarding a disciplinary matter? Saying none. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of student JD 14-88 and JD 14-89 with educational service through the 2014, 2015 school year? May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by Ms. Ely, second by Ms. Borton. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Want to take your word, want to take our word?
I've got to get it. It's not cooperating very well. There you go.
The motion passed 5-0. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn? Don't want to say you?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Ely, second by Ms. Borton. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned. Thank you.